Don't sit down.
Okay, excuse my charging, I said a T-ball emergency.
Nope, you're good. It's six o'clock, we'll call our meeting in order.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll start with our council activity reports, and I'm going to take a little break from tradition and go last this time, so if I could look down to Councilmember Hertzberg.
Yeah, okay, we had Thursday the 16th on Country Day Parade. I'll probably need Tommy John, I think I threw my arm out. And then last week, Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday, we were in Duluth for the League of Minnesota Cities Conference. A lot of good informative meetings, and pretty well attended, I think there's seven hundred or some people.
Thank you. Councilmember Brick?
I also attended the League of Minnesota Cities Conference in Duluth, that was really good. And we had an E-DAT meeting right before Duluth where we discussed the upcoming summer and some possible housing initiatives and things of that nature. I believe that's it for me.
Councilmember Soni?
I did exactly what Megan did.
Right. Councilmember Thielen?
It was a Town and Country Parade, and I hurt Neil throughout his arm, and up the League of Minnesota Cities.
So I also had the parade, of course, the League of Minnesota Cities, I think it was great that we all went. We all tried to go, Tarek joined us as well, we all tried to hit up different sessions. So I think between all of us, we each hit up just about everything that was offered, or at least those things that all pertain to the city. So I think, I know I learned a lot, probably more this year than I have in years past. Look forward to implementing some of those things. We also, I learned before we left for Duluth, the city was awarded a grant through the legislature for a study of the leaded gasoline issue. We had met with our local legislators last year, or early this year maybe, to talk about getting some funding to conduct a study. Their bills that they introduced didn't go anywhere, and then all of a sudden it came out of conference committee at the legislature, we got some money. And it came so far out of left field that not even the legislators sponsoring it knew that it happened. So, Tarek's working with the Legislative Council and Committee on Minnesota Resources, LCCMR, it's the lottery monies that go for the environmental protection. Yep, so Tarek's going to work with that agency along with the cities of Blaine, Alexandria, and Foley to conduct the study on what, if anything else, we should do at the midtown site to make sure that our water is safe for drinking. Yep, with Chuck and Ron and everybody else's, well, they said appropriate engineer. Chuck will help identify. Town and Country Days, I think, was a great success. Looked like the carnival was well-attended, the parade seemed to have more floats and people at it than in years past. The only negative thing I've really heard, I didn't get a chance to get up to Backdraft Bash, but I've heard that overall it was well-attended, that it was a good event. Talked to the fire department, police department, seems like everything there went pretty well. There was great cooperation between the two departments. We did have a couple of, I understand, some minor citations issued. So the police and fire departments are going to continue to work on that to see if there's anything we need to change going forward. Unfortunately, I've heard some grumblings around town about some of the citations that were issued. And I have talked with both the police chief and the fire chief. Tarek was in a meeting, we talked extensively about the circumstances regarding those tickets. Don't bring your kids to an event but serving alcohol if they're not 21, and don't let them drink. The law is the law. It's there for a reason, we want to protect our kids from exposure to alcohol at a young age. Prevents issues later in life. I see no issues with what was done, everything was doing proper, and the department has our full support in the actions it took that night. Or at least it has my full support in that. So if anybody has concerns about how things were handled, they can come talk to me, but from everything that I've seen, I have no concerns, and then both departments have my back as we go forward, so. With that, Mr. Mergen.
All right, thank you. First of all, the Park Department, the Constance in the Park again July the 7th, and they're on every Thursday through the 28th. The Splash Pad, we've seen quite a bit of use, obviously, in this kind of weather. Autopage, we did hear some rumors of triggers out there, we have treated the first round, we will be treating again, I believe it is, next week. Fishing Pier's seen quite a bit of use out there also. Our reservations are going strong right now, there are some open dates, if any residents are interested in that. Quite a few in August and September yet. Surplus Items, we do have them advertised, they are due on July the 8th. The Airport, the Air Show will be, I think it's the 28th of August. And also, there was a safety camp out there, we will have the Air Show report on the agenda next week, or next meeting. Everybody's noticed, the rail crossing is complete. It is done, I guess we had hoped for a little bit better cooperation with the railroad, but for the time being, this is what we will have to live with. Seal Co. project will be in the next week or two. The water filtration plant and media replacement, we did get pushback on that contractor's schedule again, so as soon as we know, we will get that word out. And also, there's two planters downtown that have been upgraded, and I did receive quite a few compliments on that, so, thank you.
It looked great. Thanks, Ron.
Any questions for Ron? Now, Charlie, can I jump in? I'm not connected today, isn't it, it's Christian here? Can she switch the news?
Pass it over here, I'll try.
Okay. Sorry about that.
All right. All right, week before last, I was out of town, so I wasn't around, but yes, I did attend the E-DAT meeting with the other guys here, and we did go up to Duluth, and I thought it was a well-attended and well-worthwhile event. On another positive note, we did also receive an award from Magnify Financial. They want to contribute $7,000 to Amby Park Shelter. So this is the third organization in town now that wants to contribute to the shelter. So I find that very encouraging.
Any questions for Tarek? Moving on then to our open forum, if there's anybody here who wants to talk something on or off the agenda. We've reserved up to 10 minutes, if you could just go up to the podium. Only because there's a microphone there.
You know, why not? Okay, can everybody hear me okay?
Yeah.
Well, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Painesville City staff. My name is Barry Bellnet, I am running for Stearns County Commissioner for District 3, which includes Painesville. A little bit about myself, I am a nine-year resident of Stearns County. I'm a commercial banker at Harvest Bank in Kimball, I work with farmers, businesses, I'm on the board, do some internal management stuff. I've got four kids, aged five to 13, been married about 15 years, most of my life is out in the country. Grew up on a hog farm with crops down in southern Minnesota that's still active. I live right around the corner from my in-laws dairy farm near Marty. Anybody know where Marty is? I guess most of you do. Why am I running? I have a lifelong interest in politics and civic involvement, exactly like what you guys are doing here. When my wife and I moved back to the area in 2013, it was a short period of time before I was on the school board at Holy Cross in Marty, where my kids attended until last year. And I was actually present in the school board for, I don't know, eight or nine years roughly. And more recently, I was lucky to serve on the lot, on the committee that stood up the new Kimball Library building. So worked on that for about three years, it was a great community fundraising experience. And many of you, if you've driven by, I'm 55 recently in Kimball, we had a new building out there. Before we moved back in 2013, my wife and I worked for the United States Department of State. We were diplomats overseas, so we served in Guyana in South America for a couple of years, and also in Frankfurt, Germany. And when Mr. Mergen, Commissioner Mergen, decided to withdraw his candidacy to run again, it just, some of my other commitments were wrapping up, and it seemed like a really interesting way to continue civic involvement. What do I have to offer? First of all, I love to learn. Community banking goes with that pretty well, I'm always learning stuff from my customers, whether it's dairy farms, or apartment buildings, or hair salons, whatever it is. I really love being involved in things, and obviously, you all know the commissioner role is very broad. I think with the diplomatic background, I think I'm pretty good at bridging gaps. The training in that life is really to bring people together from different pursuits and different perspectives, and try to find areas where you can agree and move things forward. And that's something that I think is absolutely vital to local politics and politics in general, and it's a skill that I would try very hard to bring to county government. I'm not afraid of complexity or hard conversations, I think everybody in this room, given what you do, know that some of the issues they get faced are complex, and you've got to dig in and make decisions. But the hard part of that really comes to delivering bad news, and from my perspective, I like, in my banking world, as well as, you know, assuming I'm elected to county commissioner, I think bad news is best delivered directly, people, you won't want to let people wonder where you stand, but you want to be a little bit gentle about it, because, you know, we run into each other, grocery store, gas station, ballfield where the kids are playing. If I'm running into somebody that I had to say, that I had to give news that they didn't like, I want them to understand, or I want them to have felt like they were respected, that they were heard, and that we can stand face-to-face and maybe have an opportunity to work together in the future. Stearns County, from my perspective, is a great place to live and work, I'm not going anywhere. So I see the county commissioner role as a nice opportunity for me to participate in our civic life, to hopefully contribute to keeping it good, and maybe make it a little better, and yeah, I guess I'd appreciate your support and vote, August 9th at the primary, and then with voting again at the general election in November. So thank you.
Thanks, Barry, for visiting us. I assume you're waiting until 6:30? Can't imagine why. All right, we'll move on then to the adoption of our consent agenda. Couple notes of business, old business letter B, I'm pulling off, that's still not quite right. I met with somebody earlier today, I'm going to continue that discussion over the next couple of weeks. And then we have the public hearing at 6:30. So with that, we have the consent agenda, which includes the plethora of minutes listed there, the vouchers on our supplement totaling $323,393.11, along with the resignation of one of the part-time officers. And the only thing I will just ask, chief, with that resignation, we're not looking at reopening anything, that was one of the part-timers that was helping us fill out in the temporary.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. So with that, we're looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Sold.
Motion by Hertzberg, is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Brick to approve the consent agenda. Any further discussion on that? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That carries. All right, so going on then to our regular agenda. A second, I thought I had it open, but it's apparently not. The memorandum of agreement between AFSP and Public Works. Tarek or Ron, one of you give us an update on this.
All right. Just to go back to our call time. Our call time and the crew switching on weekends, if they're scheduled for a certain time, and obviously, you do need to switch periodically, we've been switching for forever. You know, as long as I go back, we've switched call time. And apparently, we are not doing it the way the contract says that we are supposed to, so it's just a memorandum allowing us to do it this time, and it looks like we will have to negotiate to get it so we can do it, or whenever we do need to.
So, this memorandum was wrapped and reviewed by council, and then also, we are meeting tomorrow morning to figure out a long-term solution to this, so. I think it's in everyone's agreement that we keep the ability to switch shifts, even if somebody gets sick. Need the ability to fill in, and the lawyers tell us that we can't do it with the current schedule, so we will find a solution to it. So with that, we are looking for a motion to approve the memorandum of agreement.
I'll make the motion to approve memorandum of agreement between the city of Painesville, AFSP, Council 65, City Hall bargaining unit.
I have a motion by Hertzberg, seconded by Soni, stated on the action sheet to approve the memorandum of agreement. Any further discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
None.
That carries. The IRS mileage rate. I guess gas prices have gone up a little bit, so the IRS is saying that maybe the reimbursable rate for mileage should increase as well.
Starting July 1st.
July 1st, yep. In the past, we've always used the IRS rate, generally, at least I don't remember from my term that we've ever changed it mid-year, but it's something that we've always said at the first meeting of the year, reflecting the IRS rate. The question would be if we want to change it now for any mileage incurred after July 1.
I'll make the motion to increase the city mile rate from 58.5 cents per mile to 62.5 cents effective July 1st to December 31st of 2020.
Okay, a motion from Soni, is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Thielen. As stated on the action sheet to approve the mileage rate from 58.5 to 62.5 cents per mile effective July 1. Any further discussion on that? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
None.
That carries. Right, the Marco server quote on page 8, Tarek, can you talk to us about that?
Yeah, we've been looking at replacing the server, we had budgeted for, on the budget for this year, so the fall last year, we had budgeted for it. The server's no longer, you know, being handled by Dell anymore, or Marco, so we knew that we had to replace it, we looked at alternatives such as cloud server versus going with an existing new server, and still, you know, although the future is cloud, it's still more expensive, and we're going to stick with another server. Marco gave us an original quote, which we brought to budget finance and got approved, and since then, the price has gone down by about $4,000. So we're looking to get approval to this server, and as a reminder, I think we said funds will come from the COVID relief funds that we received. So that's another thing to point out.
I think from our conversation with Budget Finance, the difference in price to go cloud was about twice as expensive?
Almost twice as much.
So hopefully, by the time this one is defunct, we could be looking at reasonably priced cloud services.
I hope so, yeah.
For the time being, this is where we are. I think a part of the difference, the reason why I questioned the cloud so much was my own personal experience working with, like Dropbox or Microsoft One Drive. It does not cost me tens of thousands a year to do it, but I'm also not doing it on more of an enterprise scale like the city is, where we have to have an internal file system, VPN access, and things like that. So there are other things that go into it that make the need for an independent server greater than somebody just operating a small business like my own.
One thing to point out, though, is our server is already being backed up offsite through Marco, so I mean, if people question, well, if something goes wrong, or if something, you know, power goes out and stuff, we are being backed up offsite already, so.
I think we discussed multiple quotes in Budget Finance, and that they came back at the same price, is that right?
Yeah, the only thing to note is we're going with the same brand server, which is Dell, and the only other thing to add on to it was that when we, as the time goes on, it looks like it came up to be cheaper.
So with that, the recommendation from Budget Finance is that the council approve the purchase of the server with the funds coming from our ARPA dollars.
I'll make the motion to approve the revised server quote from Marco, which includes installation and migration from the existing server in the amount of $32,229, with funds to come from the city's ARPA.
I'll second.
A motion by Soni, seconded by Brick. As stated on the action sheet to approve the revised quote for Marco, including installation and migration, totaling $32,229, with funds coming from the federal monies. Any further discussion on that? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
None.
That carries. All right. Tarek, TBOSA telephone internet, that's on our original agenda. With an uplift, with an updated supplement.
Yes.
On page 2.
All right, as you know, I've been looking for ways for the past year of reducing our telecom servers because we have multiple providers, including MCI Long Distance, which I question why we're still using a long-distance provider. In any case, I've been talking to several companies, this is one of the companies that I talked to in addition to was on the supplement, is the other quote we got, we received two quotes. And I think the reason why we, well, I think the reason why this is timely now, just so happens that the storm that happened last month, it affected our telephone system, which we had to bring a company out here to take a look at it, which they said this is no longer being supported anyways, an outdated system. And, you know, they can just put some Band-Aids on it, in effect that this phone system will have to be replaced. Ironically, we looked at a cloud-based system here, which tends to be cheaper, and both quotes reflect the same cloud-based system, same brand phone, et cetera. The difference is that TBOSA came out to be on the installation charge, roughly half the cost, from around $2,500 or so. These guys were around $1,250. Otherwise, the monthly server is about the same. What also we get out of this is when we get rid of the long-distance service, because you use an IP or internet-based telephone system now, you eliminate that cost, and you're able to use more of your internet service versus telecom service, so that also reduces the overall cost. I think when Balid and I did an overall comparison of what our full bill would look like, even though we're paying a monthly fee for this cloud-based system, $549 per month, it is a three-year term, by the way, it still comes out to be cheaper on a monthly basis than what we're paying now. So we'll be saving roughly on our telecom almost $300 per month, having a new phone system.
So I'm just looking through the update. The quote from TBOSA, one-time fee of $13.250 plus $1.49 and then $5.49 a month versus $25.66 one-time, $5.81 monthly from Lofler.
Yeah.
So your recommendation is to continue to move forward with TBOSA?
Yeah, with comparable system.
Okay, Paul?
Do we know how this will affect, say, the service back in the police departments? Assuming if we're using like an IP address, the PD is not wired with city internet. It is wired completely different because of the security protocols with the criminal justice system. So do we know if they've taken into account the fact that they're going to have to adapt kind of that area in the PD, and how that will affect potentially the service going down in the dispatch?
I, yeah, let them know that you have your, you need a dedicated line, as well as your internet is different. So that's not quoting your internet, that's keeping your internet the same, no change.
I'm just wondering about the phone.
Yeah, are, the phone should, you should not notice any difference in your phone system because your telephone calls right now are dispatched to you, they'll ring on the same number.
Right, so the recommendation is, is what's stated on 16 of our original packet, should be approval of the quote from TBOSA and consolidating the services with a payoff in a little over four months.
I'll make the motion to approve the quote from TBOSA to upgrade the phone system and consolidate the services in the amount of $1,323 a month.
That shouldn't be per month, that should be...
No, it's $5.49 per month.
Yeah, but with the internet that we're already paying, that they just wanted to show monthly cost savings.
Our monthly costs, yeah, for them, it's $5.49 per month.
Yeah.
All right, so I have a motion by Soni, do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Hertzberg. To approve the quote from TBOSA, any further discussion on that? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
None.
That carries. Right, so five minutes before our public hearing, so we'll keep going. We have the Trail Seal Coating Project, a different stretch of the trail.
Yes, thank you, the Trail Board did meet, we did not have a forum, but the members present there did ask that we bring this to their respective boards. The portion of the trail from Bugbee to Cherrywood has, it's the only section of the trail that has never been seal-coated. We did get two quotes from Camco, a total there of $19,644.10. That includes a fog seal, the other one from the virtual asphalt at $19,825 does not include the fog, so that would be added on. So on a Camco, it was a $16,800 for the seal coating and $28.44 for the additional fog seal. The previous meeting, they asked that that be included. To cover this, we do have a trail CIP, which currently has about $33,000 in it. And this is split with the township, so the city's cost there would be $9,822, so. Any questions?
Okay, so the recommendation that is, or the request is to approve the bid from Camco, amount of $19,644.10, split equally, the city's portion being $98.2205.
I guess I, Ron, they've done work for us in the past.
This Camco, yes, they have. Normally, they've done our seal, our cart sealing, but yes, they've gotten into this also. We did try to get Aztec, a price from them, the company that will be doing our seal coating, and right now, they are not doing trails, so they were not interested in it.
I'll make the motion to approve the quote from Camco in the amount of $19,644.10 to be split 50/50, for a total of $9,2205 to be paid by the city.
Second.
We have a quote from Hertzberg, seconded by Brick, stated on the action sheet approving the bid from Camco, with the city's portion being $98.2205. Any further discussion on that? Hearing say none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Done.
That carries. Right. Ron, tell us about this hangar lease quickly, please.
All right, certainly, hangar number 8, it is a northside hangar. The pilot that we had in there is retiring from flying, so he will be giving it up, and going down our list, Bob Brown would be the next person, he has been contacted, and yes, definitely wants to rent it out. Seems like we get one pilot that leaves, and we get one or two more added on to the waiting list, so. We still have, I believe, it's six, maybe seven on the waiting list.
And the question has come up in the past and in the minutes from various meetings about if it's time to raise the rates, and I think Budget Finance, we took a look at it at our last meeting, tabled it, we wanted to get some more information. That should be coming back to us at our next meeting here in July, and then we'll send the recommendation to council after that. We're looking for a motion to approve the hangar lease agreement at the current rates.
Make the motion to approve Painesville-T-Hanger lease agreement between the city of Painesville and Bob Brown of Minnesota LLC.
I have a motion by Soni, is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Thielen, approving the lease agreement between the city of Painesville and Bob Brown of Minnesota LLC, any further discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
None.
That carries. All right, it's 6:30, so we will adjourn. That carries. All right, it's six-thirty, so we will adjourn our business meeting, or recess our business meeting, excuse me, open our public hearing on the Meyer lot split. Give me one second to get to that page in my agenda. Apparently Donovan doesn't want to build a new house in the city.
I'd want one instead.
So, wanting to split the lots and let the neighbors can each take half, is that the understanding?
Correct.
All right, anybody here to talk to us for or against it? Okay, usually anyone in opposition is a little far called, but we'll take no news as good news here. We have some findings from the planning board. Gene, is there anything you need to point out to us about that?
I was not at that meeting.
Well, they can't do that anymore, can they?
No, Jennifer knows all about it.
The planning board is not seeing the issues with it. It's simply splitting one lot in half. As the neighbors said, they just want some more elbow room. I did have a colleague come today, he received the notice, it was Keith Dombrowski, he is not going to attend tonight, but he wanted to know why the lots was, you know, asked for. I told him exactly what was on your action sheet. Don is not going to build, the neighbors are interested in the property, they're looking for marketing space, and he did have a problem. As long as it was okay with the covenants, the covenants don't outline that they can't do a lot split.
Okay. All right, with that, and seeing nobody else here for our public hearing, we will adjourn our public hearing, go back into our business meeting, and we'll just pick it up at Old Business C with the Meyer lot split, and we'll go back to A later. There are a number of things on here. We want to review the findings of the planning board, things that are contained therein, and we'd look for a recommendation on either A or B on both of those there as far as whether or not it complies, and then whether or not we should grant the lot split. I would note that if we say it does not comply, then we can't grant it. So just careful when somebody makes a motion.
City council of the city of Painesville, having reviewed the lot split application together with the findings and recommendation of the planning board, and having heard the opinions of the members of the public as presented at the public hearing, find that the lot split complies with the requirements of city code, chapter thirty, sections thirty through one-eighty-six, I'm a little odd here, through thirty-to-one-ninety. And the request for splitting of lot five, lot one, Heatherwood Platte three, for purposes of attachment as described above, is hereby granted. Motion to approve, it's just a going. Motion to approve resolution twenty-twenty-three to twenty-two, twenty-two dash twenty-three on the lot split.
All right, so I have a motion by Soini to approve resolution twenty-twenty-two dash twenty-three, finding that the proposed lot split does comply with the requisite city codes and that the purpose, or that the split should be granted. Is there a second?
Certainly.
Seconded by Thielen. Did we get all of the technicalities right?
You did.
Okay.
They have to be legal.
All right. Any further discussion on that? Okay, yes.
I guess I'm not against this, but at the end of the day, I'd kind of rather see houses on the lots than additional space, although your property value is gonna go up, so you're gonna pay a little additional tax too, but I kind of see both sides, but I'm not gonna vote against it.
I had similar thoughts to you. Sort of came down with if they were smaller lots to begin with, that we're looking at a more densely planned housing development, but given how much space is out there between the houses now, I think it makes sense to give a little bit more breathing room. All right, calling the question, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None? That's carried. You have one?
Yeah, that comes first, thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
Hi, Mary, you're welcome.
All right, and we will look forward to the mergers of those lots in the near future. Okay, looking then back to Old Business A on page thirty-three, the revisions to the liquor ordinance in light of the state legislature's revisions came before us last meeting. We said go ahead and post it. Here we are, more than ten days later. Looking to burn ourselves current, so a motion to approve and a motion approving the summary.
I'll make the motion to approve ordinance number thirty-seven, third series.
Motion by Soini approving the ordinance, is there a second?
Certainly.
Seconded by Hertzberg approving ordinance number thirty-seven, third series. Any further discussion on this? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? None? That carries. And is there a motion approving the summary?
I'll make the motion to approve the official summary of ordinance number thirty-seven, third series.
Gene, he'll beat you to it. Do you want a second?
Yeah, sure.
Okay. Motion by Hertzberg, seconded by Soini, approving the official summary of ordinance number thirty-seven, third series. Any discussion on this? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? None? That carries. Question before we move on, Bill, Jen, something that's come up before. Are we able to amend our liquor ordinances, and I know we've talked about it, so forgive me, to allow other facilities in town to serve beer that's not just three-two beer? Or are we still restricted by, it's the state statute, yes?
We are restricted by the state statute as to who can sell strong beer, yes. Now, I think the, I think the amendment would allow not only the ball team, but the bowling alley to, to go to strong beer if they chose, but not, you know, not convenience stores.
It'd be strictly like on sale, pretty much. Yeah.
Yeah. And since we have a municipal liquor store, we can't have other on sales.
All right. I see there was something, current fee for wine is one-fifty, and if this needs to be changed, then the committee responsible for that is finance, correct?
Yes.
And that might be something they want to look at when they look at fees.
It wouldn't, I mean, it wouldn't affect the ball team because there's going to be a wine license, basically, and they can sell strong beer with it. I don't, I'm not sure. I would assume the same would apply to a bowling alley, but not a hundred percent sure.
But I'm just wondering if they want that to go up a little bit, or...
Oh, I don't know, yeah. I mean, I guess fees are always, fees are always subject to review, I'm sure.
Right. But for now, that's not part of the motion.
All right, moving on then to an agreement between the city and the township for the sand and salt storage facility. Again, born out of our push to bring everything into the twenty-first century with the township. So this has been revised, twenty-five hundred dollars a year for five years. A little bit of history, we did discuss the city potentially building its own storage. Nope, I'm going ahead of myself, never mind. We're talking about ice skating.
Yep, the ice skating, right, thank you.
Yeah? Go ahead.
Awesome, that is twenty-two-fifty. So we have in the agreement, as you stated, it is for five years, and the township is responsible for all the utilities, maintenance and repair up at the facility, including the lighting, et cetera. I guess I think for twenty-two-fifty, we, there's no way we could even come close to doing it for this dollar amount. I guess I would recommend it.
And just a correction, the, the action sheet says twenty-five hundred, the contract is twenty-two-fifty, so.
Yes.
The, the annual amount would be the twenty-two-fifty.
Oh, it's twenty-two.
A question before you're on. Does that include a warning house?
Yes. Yeah. And that's the amount that we have been paying?
Correct, yeah.
Okay, so we'd be looking for a motion to confirm this amount for the next five years.
I'll make the motion to approve the agreement, use of outdoor ice skating facility between city of Painesville, Painesville Township.
I have a motion by Hertzberg, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Thielen, to approve the agreement for the use of the outdoors ice skating facility between the city of Painesville and Painesville Township. Any further discussion? And all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? None? Now, I have the sand and salt. Ron?
All right, thank you. Yes, Public Works did look at this one. I think it's been noted before that we've looked very hard at building our own facility over at the shop. I think for a number of reasons, number one being cost, yes, it would definitely be convenient if we had it over there, but I think we just, another reason, we just do not have, have the room. Looking at it, also, you know, we would be obligated, or I guess we also looked at a no-charge facility renting from the township, and, but then at that point, we would be responsible, or would have been responsible for all the M and R, along with the township at their facility. After reviewing it, the committee said, no, let's just stick with paying them an annual rent of fifteen-hundred dollars per year. And I think, again, that is a very fair amount.
Yeah, we certainly can't build for that.
No, not even close.
I'll make the motion to approve the agreement for use by the city of Painesville and the township for sand and salt storage facility.
Motion by Soini, is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Brick, approving the agreement for use by the city of Painesville of the township's sand and salt facility. Any further discussion on that?
One thing with this agreement now, we've been doing the administrative, or when other entities got sand, and we're no longer gonna do that, so it's a little favorable that way too.
That is correct, yes.
And with that, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Done? That carries. Oil depository agreement, page seventy. Ron again.
Okay, yes, the oil depository, recreational vehicle, and the compo site, I think that's been through the working sessions a number of times. On the compo site, we swap money back and forth, and the RV dump has, you know, there's very little operating cost there, and the donations we get there usually would cover those. So we combined them all three into one agreement, and presenting it through the council now, and the township has reviewed this and tentatively agreed to it also.
And we're not exchanging any money, is that...
Correct.
The others. I thought that's what we had decided.
Ron, I have a couple of questions before we vote.
Sure.
The boxes at the three sites, who gets the monies or all, all this artwork?
At the compo site and the RV dump, the city receives that money. At the oil depot, the township gets that money.
Okay. And... I have no problem with the oil and the RV dump. I think we have an awful lot of cost with the grinding and the pushing the debris together and turning the compost. I'd almost like to see a fifty-fifty agreement on expenses. The contractors, where's that money go?
The contractors, that all comes to the city.
Okay, well, that helps cover the expenses that I just...
I guess the majority of our costs out there are, we receive, it's three thousand dollars a year of score funds, towards the compost operation.
What funds? I, I didn't understand what you said, what, what kind of funds?
The, from the county, the score funds?
Gotcha.
Yes.
In the past, we've essentially been receiving a check fifteen-hundred dollars a year from the township for the compost site, but we've been cutting them a check fifteen-hundred a year for the oil depot.
Correct.
And the RV dump is essentially no charge.
Correct.
So they were effectively just balancing each other out.
Yes.
How many contractors do we?
Oh, right off, I think it's five, maybe six.
So that's another thousand bucks, or...
Yes.
Well, then I don't have a problem with going ahead on all three, and I'll make the motion to approve oil depository, recreational vehicle dump site, and the compo site agreement between city of Painesville and township.
I have a motion by Hertzberg to approve the contract, is there a second?
Second.
By Soini. Right, any further discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? None? That carries. Right, the nature park sidewalk. Ron, you want to tell us a little bit about what's going on here?
Yes, thank you. Down at Nature Park, last fall, they did come forward and ask for us to fund, in addition to their sidewalk system, it would be ADA compliant, which I think is obviously very important. But at that time, we had agreed to thirty-five-hundred dollars, the project moved forward in the means of them searching for additional funds, which they did receive some, however, they are still seven-hundred-and-forty dollars short to complete the work. And they have come back to the city asking if we would contribute that additional amount.
You have some money in your sidewalk fund?
Actually, there is.
There you go.
Do you know, going back to my report, I also attended the Centra Care groundbreaking on Friday, that's why I left the L M C a little early. But one of the things that they were pointing out there a couple of times was the Centra Care Foundation. Do you know if they applied through that at all?
I would, I do not know for certain, no. But if I would have to guess, probably not.
I guess that's where I was, you know, we came up with the project of seven thousand, and you repaid seventy-five, or with the Voss's discount, they're coming in at fifty-seven-hundred. So we've already paid over half of the project, and seven-forty, you know, Sportsman's Club sits, is sitting on all kinds of money. Might be something they'd be interested in contributing, liars, the leech and gambling, makes many donations, so there's a lot of other organizations and all is asking the city, even the township, where is there a contribution? So I respect Mr. Grant, but I think he could do a little more liquor work. So I guess I'm gonna recommend that we recheck it and ask them to look for other venues.
Can I say something?
Yep.
It, seven-hundred-and-forty dollars does not really seem like a whole lot of money compared to what's gonna be put in. And I, with the city, we've been trying to keep costs down, cutting here and there, seven-hundred-and-forty dollars seems like a lot less than, say, for instance, what we happen to do with the lawnmower, and with a lot of money saved there. So I would say, let's just go through with this instead of wasting more time for the seven-hundred-and-forty dollars. If we keep begging, I shouldn't say begging, requesting for more monies from, from other places, there's a good chance that they might be reluctant because if we do it too often, then we're gonna, we're welcome. So I would suggest just go ahead and do the seven-hundred-and-forty dollars and move on with the project.
But we've already contributed thirty-five-hundred, so I feel we've done our share and more.
It does say they've applied for other grants but haven't had success, but that the church in Candy Ojai Power and Delta Pilots and that they have... and that they have contributed.
Right.
I don't know if it might be worthwhile to suggest the Centurk Care or not, because, you know, we have to bring, we have to bring things up to ADA compliance, so.
Well, and right now, I don't think there's any type of a concrete trail down there, is there? Not even one that's...
There's a very small concrete trail from the restaurants over to the shelter. That is it.
Yes, you'd have to operate there and be able to get down.
To me, it makes sense if we can verify that they've been turned down by local sources. The community foundation, Centurk Care, the liens, the sportsman's club. If we can verify that they've been turned down, and I can think of those four, and they've said no, then I'm good with moving forward with this, because I do, I agree with Paul, that the benefits outweigh the cost. But I also think we owe it to the taxpayers to make sure that we're exhausting. I mean, the sportsman's club and the liens, they get gambling revenue for reasons just like this. It's seven hundred and forty dollars. I can't imagine the lians would say no to that.
I think the sportsmen's club will go along, too.
I mean, the lians give money to the trail guards every year. I don't know, but I'm sure they use it for other things. I don't know how that goes.
Yeah. So I guess it makes sense to me to make sure that they've exhausted local options, and then we cut the check if we have to. But I'd like the due diligence to make sure that those things have been exhausted. All right, anyone wanting to make a motion on this?
I'll make the motion that we hold off until they look at these other local entities for help.
So it's essentially a motion to table. Right, I have a motion by Hertzberg to table. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. Motion by Hertzberg, seconded by Soini to table, bring back to our next agenda to verify other sources. Any discussion on that? Hearing and seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Opposed.
One opposed, that does carry. Right, going on then to the employee recognition program on page seventy-seven. We did an employee recognition, or maybe we didn't do one last year. We had a luncheon. We called it whatever we called it. So we're just looking. Yep.
Be big, gentlemen.
One thing that was brought up, and this was at the League of Minnesota Cities, was how do we get these types of things approved? There was a city, Meyer, Minnesota, I think it was, does an annual event. Actually, they do it monthly, where they do like a Fun Friday event, and every month, the city buys the meat for their luncheon. So I asked the question of, how did you get that past your auditors? And their answer was, we didn't tell them. Essentially, more than office miscellaneous petty cash.
Their wellness program.
Well, and that was the league's suggestion, was that under the wellness programs, we can, we have great flexibility on doing various things like this. And I also, I, they threw out some suggestions on alternative forms of employee recognition, recognizing that the millennial and Gen Z and whatever else that my kids are now, don't necessarily like the watches and placards that have traditionally been five, ten, fifteen-year anniversary gifts, and looking at other things. So I think it would make sense to go forth with a resolution like this, but if we wanted to take some time and come up with something a little bit more creative, and take advantage of some of the things I learned last week, we could do that as well. Unfortunately, I attended that program as Jen was sending the agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the City of Painesville employee recognition program.
Right. Motion by Thielen to approve the program. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Soini. Any further discussion? I will just add that I like this for now, but let's see if we can't come up with something better as we move forward. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? None? That carries. All right, VOC tower operation on page seventy-nine. Ron and Chuck, please.
Thank you. Mike, we had asked Bolton and Mink to give us a letter on exactly what was happening down at the VOC plant. And since Bolton and Mink has put this together, I'm gonna let Chuck walk us through.
Thank you. So yeah, as everybody's aware, there's some kelp and precipitate issues happening down at the water plant. This was happening as a result of the pH of the water changing and getting too high. So we did a bunch of testing at different stages in the plant. And what was found is, you know, essentially, without the presence of any VOCs or benzene or anything in the water, as the water goes through that tower, it's actually sort of removing a lot of the carbon dioxide that's in the water, and causing the water sort of becomes super saturated with oxygen, which is in turn kicking up the pH. In the future, if we ever do receive contamination, that whole chemistry could change significantly, and that may not occur in the future if there is contamination. So we looked at, we looked at the options of what we can do. Obviously, there's acid addition, or acid can be added at right now. It's a two-hundred-and-fifty gallon storage, obviously with the amount of acid. That's the other thing with the high alkalinity in your water, the amount of acid that it takes to drop, the pH gets to be very excessive. So there is storage there now, but during a heavy day in the summer, it'll only be a few days. So we looked, the option two would be to put in a larger acid storage system and continue to feed that, probably about a five-thousand gallons of acid. The third option we looked at is to just continue to bypass the VOC tower. Obviously, there's no contamination at this point based on the testing. So we can continue to just bypass it, can do some additional monitoring and compliance, or companion sampling with PCA on a monthly basis. And if there, you know, right now, there's a monitoring well on Maywood, I believe, if I'm correct. That has never had contamination yet, so if we ever did get a hit there, I mean, obviously, the plant can be, the plant can be put back online, you know, pretty much instantaneously. So there's a safeguard there. The other option we looked at is reducing the amount of media in the tower, and that was just to get, let, put less oxygen into that water, and therefore not raise the pH levels. So we reviewed this with the public works, and they recommended going with option three. Like I said, obviously, when the VOC tower was constructed, you know, at that point in time, there was no backup plan. The MPCA had zero plans, and if contamination ever did reach us, on how we were gonna supply water. So the VOC plant is there, like I said, can be turned on pretty much instantly if we were to detect any kind of VOCs or benzene in the water.
I have a question for you. Number three, it says, standby monitor till contaminant is detected. Was that manual testing to detect it, or is that automatic?
No, there's, the tests are sample, would be sampled.
So it'd be manual?
Yes.
Is there any way to get it automatically tested?
Good for that. There's nothing that would, I mean, the only automatic, I think you could do it, the deal automatically, and I think that, you know, they make automatic pH meters.
Something like that, yeah.
Something like this.
For benzene, it's a lab test.
Yes.
So right now, they're testing all the monitoring wells between the site and the wet fields. They are, they're tested.
Okay.
Companion tests, I think the last time.
And they're testing those annually?
Some.
Okay. And the recommendation is to go to quarterly tests?
No. I thought we were saying monthly testing, no?
Yeah, that's what was talked about at the public works, is going to like a monthly test.
Monthly testing?
Yeah. That way, if there was any issue where it was evident that the plume was getting closer, we would know.
When we did our last test of that, we ran into some pushback from MPCA on opening the wells. Are we going to be able to test that frequently?
I guess that is something, I'm gonna have to follow up with PCA, if they would give us a key, or how we can arrange that.
And... Maybe I'm just remembering this wrong, but I thought part of shutting down the VOC plant was MPCA's recommendation as well.
Not MPCA, that is the Department of Health. Recommendation, yes.
And are they willing to send us something in writing?
If I stand corrected, MPCA does not make recommendations. They will take this letter, and if this is what the council approves, we can submit it from them, and they will approve it. If we wanna add, go to, say, the sulfuric acid, we would need to get Department of Health's approval for that also.
How long would it take to open that treatment plant back up?
Couple days. It'd be just a matter of getting the chemical in here and, you know, make sure it's chlorinated enough so it can be operated again. Definitely less than a week.
So what would the cost be from semi-annually to quarterly to monthly for the testing? Do you have any ballpark figures?
I think the sampling, I think it's about a thousand dollars per gallon of sample. Or I guess how many wells do we want, you know, we're gonna have a couple of sampling plan? And how many monitoring wells do we want? Do we just do the one on Maywood? I guess that will...
So the sampling, would that be more cost-effective to do that, or to have the sulfuric acid brought in?
The sulfuric acid, just that alone, we would be looking at about a hundred thousand dollars a year.
Oh, okay.
If we want to build the structure, thirty-day supply, we're gonna be talking probably three, four hundred thousand just for the structure.
You'll need a structure that's heated at least.
Okay, that makes sense.
Ron, it seems like if you were testing just the well that's closest, I mean, it's, you still have quite a bit of distance between the closest well that would be available for testing, and where you're taking your water from, don't you, I mean, you're, you'd still have a margin of safety there if you...
Oh, absolutely, yes, we would. You know, and also, if we look at the grant that we just received, once Bolton and Mink get to study this, I think that will also give us another layer of security, or is it something that we need to look at a little deeper?
So could part of that grant be used to help with this cost?
No, that's only for the study.
Okay.
But, I mean, we have talked with the legislators in the past, who expressed, we expressed our frustration with the high cost of operating the VOC plant, and discussed whether additional appropriations could be made, such as for the high cost of the new media that was supposed to last twenty years, and lasted five or whatever it was. So there was some interest in helping us try and get some funding there. Who knows what will ever happen with the legislature now? Here's my fear, Ron. If we need to activate that VOC plant in the next year and a half, we can do it within a week. If we need to activate it five or ten years from now, how long is it going to take us to do it? And when I say...
I was just gonna say, for instance, if we would have a complete turnover, I would think that who's ever here at the time would consult the engineers and go through the plans, and they could still have it operational within a week or two, very easily.
There's nothing terribly Painesville-specific about that, that... No. I would like to see the testing plan before signing off on it, but that's me.
Paul, that's not really part of the motion, we can set that up afterwards.
Yeah.
This is in testing.
But I would like to make sure that we can do the additional testing before we shut down the plant. If MPCA is going to get in our way, then I don't wanna shut down the plant.
Yeah, 'cause in the motion, it says with additional monitor well testing, but doesn't say how much additional.
Right. I guess I'd like to see the plan and sort of, I mean, it doesn't have to be a step-by-step, which is sort of a rough, oh, no, here's what we do in this scenario.
Yeah, we can provide a map that shows where these wells are, and what the sampling, what we could do for second.
Okay. And then something from the MPCA or Department of Health, whomever giving us access to those wells as needed. We could certainly move forward with this, but without a plan in place, I would be a no vote in shutting down the VOC plant at this time.
I say we table it until we get more info.
How long do you think that might take? Next meeting?
Should have, anyway, next meeting.
Okay. All right, so we'll just bump this out to our next meeting then. All right, AMPI Phase Two Facility Plan update. Continue, and Ron and Chuck show.
All right, in your packet is a copy of the facility plan that was prepared. As the council may recall, this was completed basically as a result of AMPI's desire to continue to increase their discharge to the city's wastewater treatment facility. Basically, what we did is we looked at a couple of different options and consulting with AMPI. Right now, they discharge about forty-five hundred pounds BOD to your system per day. And there's two scenarios that were considered in the report. One brings them up to seven thousand pounds a day, and the other option two was to twenty-five thousand pounds a day. And that's basically at the twenty-five thousand pound a day level, they're discharging all their high-strength waste that they currently haul away into the facility. So they wanted us to look at the two different options. In addition, they do want additional flow allocation, with one option going up to about six hundred thousand gallons a day, and the other one to six hundred and fifty thousand gallons a day, so. Really, what we did is we looked at a couple different, several different treatment options that were available to handle the waste.
Sorry, but could you explain to me what CBOD and TSS mean?
BOD is basically, CBOD is like the strength of the wastewater. It's a, it's a biochemical oxygen demand in the wastewater. So it's sort of the, that's what their high BOD level is, is what creates the additional treatment
Okay.
of the waste, so.
TSS is where it is, total suspended solids.
Okay, gotcha.
So basically, we looked at several different options on how to handle their waste. One was to go to what's called a conventional activated sludge system, where basically, after your area of pond, we'd be putting in some clarifiers, and at that point, you'd also be putting in the sludge storage tank, and we'd be handling sludge routinely. The other option that came in that was a decent option was what's known as an anaerobic reactor. In that particular one, AMPI's waste would go through this, a two-cell reactor. It's basically an anaerobic digester. It breaks down their waste, and then it would be combing again with the rest of the city waste in your irrigation basin into the ponds, so. Both options also do include a new additional pond. You're at the point with the facility where the additional flow would result in a new pond, just to be able to hold the water prior to irrigation, so. So there's a lot of other options I've looked at, but these were primarily the two options that would work, became the best choices. In there, you can see the different costs of the system. Obviously, they get very expensive. The activated sludge process on the... The activated sludge process on the, for the low, for option one with the lower BOD was in the twenty-six to thirty million dollar range, was the high strength, the higher strength, twenty-five thousand pounds a day was in the fifty-three to fifty-eight range a million. Anaerobic digester options, you can see, is eighteen to twenty-two for option one, twenty-four to thirty million for option two. So obviously, these very expensive projects. At this point in time, AMPI is doing their own due diligence on what their options are going to look like. Obviously, this is being driven a hundred percent by them in their waste stream. So they're going through and looking at their options, whether a pre-treatment type option is available for them or if they want to continue to pursue this down the road. So we're sort of in a waiting game while they go through there. If they come back and want the city to pursue, obviously, funding will become a big, a big portion of this and there'll be a lot of additional discussions. But just wanted to provide you a quick update on where the project sits, and like I said, at this point, we're sort of just waiting for AMPI to go through their process.
Do you know if this is the only plant that's being considered for this type of expansion? Or do you know if there's other plants that are?
For AMPI?
Yeah.
facilities? Are you talking about their other facility?
Well, yeah, I'm just wondering if, if there's going to be any sort of competing plant, for lack of better words, that would get this sort of upgraded? Maybe I should be asking the AMPI or AF.
I guess I can speak for them.
Yeah, okay.
All right, so you're looking for us to approve the plan so that it's there while they conduct their diligence efforts and?
Yeah, if this moves forward, if they come back and ask the city to move forward with the project, this will be in front of the council many, many times in the future with much more in depth. Like I said, this is just sort of an update on where we're at and, and some of the different things that were considered.
Right, do you need us to approve the plan or is this sort of an F, informational thing?
Sort of an FYI. The council did authorize, I think it was almost thirty thousand dollars, so maybe we should have put us the whole to make and get paid. Now, maybe we don't need to.
Imagine what Chuck would want to eat.
Probably gets paid.
Yeah, so yeah, let's, it's recommended to us that we have a motion regarding the facility plan update, so we'll call for that.
I'll make, go ahead, Jen.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Soini, seconded by?
I'll second.
Thielen, thank you, to accept the facility plan update. Any further discussion on that? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That does carry. All right, with that, that is the conclusion of our business. We have a couple of thank you notes in our packet, the grant from the community foundation for AMPI Park, along with our garbage rates and meeting schedules. And with that, we are.